Okay. Hello and welcome to the -- have a seat, everyone. We're going to get started here, if you can. Okay. Okay. Welcome to the Special Planning Commission Workshop on the Wall property. And I'm going to turn it over now to Town Manager Garrett Toy.
So, great. Thanks, Madam Chair. So, really quickly, as a point of order, what we did was tonight's really a planning commission workshop. And first of all, thank you for everyone for attending. It's a planning commission workshop, but we also had a variety of town committees, as well as the council members interested in attending. And so, in some cases, we had a quorum of those different bodies. So, just avoid any violations of the Brown Act. What we did is we noticed everything. It's a special meeting for these different committees. So, I need to call a roll for those, but after that, really, it's a planning commission workshop. So, for the town council, I see the mayor's here and the vice mayor, but is council member Lax here? Oh, there he is. Sorry. Oops. Anyone -- I don't think John or David are here, right? Okay. Great. So, that's a quorum of the town council. And then, obviously, the planning commission, Jim has that. And then, I believe, the open space committee? How many people are here from the open space committee? If you just raise your hand. So, just one. Okay. Well, no meeting for that body until the others show up. And then, general plan implementation committee?
No.
No? Okay. And tree committee? Just one? Oh, two. Two? Okay. All right. Well, we're not going to open that committee either. And then, affordable housing advisory committee? One.
Peter's on it, too.
Two. Okay. So, at this point, we didn't open the others. If a quorum shows up later, we might have to technically open it at that point. So, with that, again, thank you for coming to the planning commission workshop. And with that, I'd like to turn it back to the chair.
Planning and building director, Jim Moore.
Yep. I believe, Vice Chair Caroline, you have an announcement about the streaming?
Yes. I thank you for the reminder. So, tonight, we're being broadcast on cable channel 30, not 27, as usual. And the web stream can be seen at cmcm.tv/lineedu. And currently, they're having trouble with the Internet connection on the town website, but they are working to resolve that. Hope to have that up soon.
Thank you. I'm going to cruise around a little bit. So, my name is Jim Moore, and I have the honor of being your director of planning and building services for the town for the last six and a half years. And we're here tonight for a planning commission workshop. Before any formal applications come in, we invited Mr. Rothman to come and meet with the public to discuss any ideas he may have for developing the property and to have him have an opportunity to hear from you all of any concerns you may have with him developing the property. And also, for you to hear from town staff, myself, and our principal planner for technical questions, Lynda Neal, and the town manager, Garrett, who you just heard from, Garrett Toy, about what's involved with developing a piece of property like this. So, this workshop is to get everyone together before anything formally happens, so there's a chance to talk and discuss things. And I want to thank Mr. Rothman for agreeing to do this, and I want to thank the planning commission for sponsoring it. And as you heard just now, we cast a wide net to all the other commissions and committees in town to see if we get everybody here. And I see we just got David Smadbeck here, so we now have a quorum of the affordable housing committee. So, I'm going to go briefly through the entitlements process, starting with sort of giving you an overview of the location and the size of the property, known commonly as the Wall property. This family owned it with the Walls. I'm going to talk about the current zoning and general plan policies, and specifically one policy relative to this site. Give you a brief overview of the entitlements process, which is basically as we described it in a letter that we put out as an informational piece two years ago. And then, we're going to end on some -- just some quick overview of the existing conditions, and then turn it over to Mr. Rothman. After that, we'd like to hear from you all on comments that you have. And Garrett Toy, our town manager, will be actually recording your comments on the flip chart. And then, after we've heard from you all, we'll bring it back up to the planning commission for them to have a final discussion in your presence to hopefully just sort of give the owner, Mr. Rothman, some heads up on advice, if he -- if they have any, on how he might move forward. So, with that, let's start with the location and size. Yes. So, this is an aerial you may have seen. There were some folks to put together a town website, or a website on this property. And in essence, the Wall property, this is Sir Francis Drake. I'm sorry? Ah, sure. Sure. You bet. I'm going to be in somebody's way, so excuse me. So, the Wall property comprises approximately 99 acres. So, to get your bearings, here's Sir Francis Drake, all right? There's the Fairfax Market, Bennett House, St. Redus Church and School. And then, up behind Bennett House, you know, that's the hill where kids slide down on the cardboard pieces. And then, the property has the ridge sort of at the bottom here, and then it's sort of the downhill slope off of this ridge line going up to the top ridge, and that's actually the border with San Inselmo. And then, if you notice, there's a ridge line coming down this way, which we'll come back to in a moment. And then, there's a ridge line coming down here. And then, this border at the northwest, northerly east part of the property is actually the border of Fairfax. And what some of you may or may not know, Oak Manor Drive is actually in the county, and Fairfax has a little piece of it over here. So, that's sort of the bearings. Next slide. This is a zoning map, and it's a little hard to see at this resolution, but you can find it online, and it's a part of the general plan's land use element. And every piece of property in town has a zoning designation. And that zoning designation has an explanation in the zoning ordinance of what is and is not allowed. So, any one of your properties in town has a zoning designation. The most -- the majority of the Wall property is designated UR-10. That stands for Upland Residential 10-Acre Minimum Sites. Upland Residential 10-Acre Minimum Parcel Size. This is a 99-acre site. You can see there's -- this is a large part right here. This is another parcel, and then this parcel. In addition to the UR-10 zoning on the majority of the property, there is a very small piece down, right down here next to the development of the already subdivided area, and that is a lot that's zoned RS-7.5. That's residential with a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. And in fact, in the RS-7.5 zoning area, if there's a slope to it, depending on the angle of that slope, you actually need more square footage in your lot to be a buildable lot. Next slide, please. So, that was the zoning, UR-10, and a very small piece, RS-7.5. This is a very important policy in the town's general plan. In the open space element, it says that the town should encourage the creation of open space through clustered development on parcels in this inventory. And what they're referring to is, in the back appendix of the general plan, that open space committee designated a list of properties in town that they seem are very -- they feel are very important to, if at all possible, protect for the future generations and preserve its open space. So, the program actually calls for, if development plans are presented to the planning commission, which is right here before you, for parcels on the inventory list, the commission should encourage clustered development on a small segment of the parcel with provision for an easement on the undeveloped portion to create designated open space. I might add that we can't insist on the piece that's the designated open space. You can't do that. And usually, in this day and age, it's accomplished through what's called a development agreement. Next slide, please. So, I'm sorry about the resolution here. There's actually 25 copies that were in the back of the room, and there's a taped-up version of this. But this is the letter we put out in June of 2013. I'm going to breeze through real quickly. And what it does is it gives a sort of an overview of the entitlements process. It starts with the general plan and the land use designation, which I just explained, is for the majority UR-10 and a little piece RS-7.5. And then, it also explains the open space policy that I just projected on the wall. It also talks about how the parcels that you saw on the zoning map, those are actually tax parcels. They show up on the tax assessor's rolls. This is where it gets a little complicated in our business. Those APN, Assessor Parcel Numbers, are not necessarily legal lots. You have to substantiate that they've been legally created. And some of you may have heard that Mr. Rothman actually submitted two rounds of requests for the town to determine whether any of the lots that he perceived as lots were legally created. The first batch was four, and the second batch was six. And with the first batch, as well as the second batch, the town is required to either issue a certificate of compliance, saying they're legally created, or a conditional certificate of compliance, which stipulates they're not legally created. And the owner will have to go through a process in both the California Subdivision Map Act and the town code to create legal parcels. I might add, of the 10 parcels that Mr. Rothman submitted to the town to make a determination, only three of those parcels were over 10 acres in size. So, the first step in developing a piece of property like this, the 99 acres, is to actually submit a tentative parcel map, a tentative subdivision map act, a map, and that complies with the state subdivision map act and the town's tentative parcel map requirements. In addition to going through the subdivision process, the state of California way back in the mid-'70s created the California Environmental Quality Act, which is referred to in abbreviated form as SEQA. SEQA is a parallel process to someone going through getting entitlements on a piece of property like this. It's intended to inform the public and appointed officials and elected officials as they make their decisions, to inform them about environmental consequences. And there's approximately 17 to 19 categories that you have to go through with a checklist. It's called an initial study. And after you get done with that initial study, if there's any impacts that can't be mitigated to less than significant, then you have to do a full-blown environmental impact report, which is a very arduous exercise and very costly. In this county, it's hard to do an environmental impact report for under a couple hundred thousand bucks. So, I just would like to read you one very important section of this information letter, and we'll post this online after tonight's meeting. Should the property be approved for subdivision, each individual parcel would then be required to obtain additional discretionary permits from the planning commission for residential development, which could include, but is not limited to, hill area residential development permits, excavation permits, use permits, design review, variances. Please note that any decisions by the planning commission are subject to appeal before the town council. And then, lastly, our information memo explains the estimated timeframe to accomplish these major actions. And it's basically impossible, especially if you ever get into litigation, to determine exactly how long something like this goes -- takes to occur, but it is onerous. It is, at a minimum, a year, and looking at well beyond that, depending on circumstances that arise. And in addition to the timing involved, an owner such as Mr. Rothman has to deal with the town of Fairfax general plan that was passed in 2012, state of California subdivision map act, the California environmental quality act, the Fairfax subdivision ordinance, Upland Residential Zone District, ridge line development ordinance, hill area residential development overlay zone, design review, excavation, parking permits, and parking impact study, if any. So, that was a very thorough heads up we gave to prospective buyers, but to buyer beware, we had it out there when you were looking at it. And next slide, please. So, I'm going to stop now with the existing conditions. This is a topo map that Mr. Rothman provided us, and it's a little hard to see at this resolution, but in essence, we're looking again at Sir Francis Drake at the bottom here. And then, you can see the Oak Manor subdivision. All right? Sorry, sorry. I beg your pardon. Miranda, oh, excuse me. And what I'd like to point out is that, as you saw in the aerial, there's essentially three ridge lines. It's coming down here, coming down here, and coming over here. Road access to the site is pretty intuitive. It's at the end of Miranda Drive. The drive stops right here, if you notice, right there. Excuse my shaky hand. And then, the fire trail continues, which has been enjoyed by people for many years, right? So, the common sort of access point to this property intuitively, as a land use planner, would be right there, to continue the road, right? And if you were to follow the recommended -- the policy recommended in the open space element, you would cluster whatever potential development rights the owner ends up with at the end of that road. Having said that, if you notice up here on the ridge, somebody along the way carved some really nice pads up there that would be prime, prime spots to locate a very valuable house. So, again, we're hoping that in this conversation tonight, we can sort of hear from the property owner, hear concerns from you. And I just gave you a list of sort of an overview of the entitlements process with the location, size, current zoning, general plan policies, entitlement process, and existing conditions. I'm going to be interested to hear how the conversation unfolds tonight with regards to, if development is going to be allowed to occur, where should it occur? And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Rothman.
Excuse me, I have kind of a bad ankle, so I'm dripping up here. Yeah. And I'm going to have to talk. Okay. There we go. That sounds better. Ladies and gentlemen, planning, Jim, and Garrett, and Mimi, and Madam Mayor, thank you for setting --
Hey, hey.
The mic? Louder? Turn it up? Is there a way to turn this up? Okay. Thank you for setting this special session and giving me a chance to get some input and to let you know what my thinking and some of my constraints are. We have some parameters that you're aware of, I'm sure, and some that maybe you're not.
Bruce.
Okay, no problem. For those of you who don't know, my name is Marshall Rothman. I'm the managing partner of the investor group that is charged with shepherding this property going forward. I'm a long-term, longtime general contractor and real estate developer specializing in large land, low-density developments. I did bring one of my previous projects here. I looked for more of them, but I'm in the process of moving. It's kind of hard to find them sometimes. Let me get my glasses. It's getting to the point where I can't read anything anymore.
There we go.
Okay. I'll try to speak louder. Okay. Okay. And I'm also -- also, I'm a Greenpoint raider. I don't know if any of you -- most of you know what that is, but if -- no, it's okay. I can handle this. If anybody wants me to elaborate on that, I can do that also. I mention that because any proposal that we do bring forth will be in compliance with the intents of the -- and the letter of the Greenpoint application process. And just for those who are not familiar with Greenpoint, it's a nonprofit organization whose goal is to promote better practices and sustainable materials in the development construction industry. And the approach that we take is soup to nuts. We look at not only energy efficiency of building, but their entire carbon footprint and ecological impact through a rating system administered and overseen by raiders such as myself, who ensure that not only are good construction practices developed and observed, but also that the materials used are as much as possible renewable resources harvested and are created in a sustainable way. We further look at how those materials are transported, what kind of transportation is used, proximity to services and transportation for inhabitants, disabled access, and then how any inevitable waste is recycled or dealt with. In order for builders and -- to help builders and planners, and I'm sure you in the planning are aware of this, quantify all of these sometimes disparate interests, we developed a rating system that -- to be used by field architects and city planners and builders. And the rating system is also administered and monitored from beginning to end by raiders and has been incorporated into the building permit process of an increasing number of cities and counties and towns, of which Fairfax, I believe, is one. I mention this mostly, again, because any proposal that we bring in will be in compliance and will incorporate this system. The property we're here to discuss, as Jim pointed out, is 99-plus or minus acres. And this, you know, is described right now by four APN numbers, Assessor Parcel Numbers. And as Jim correctly pointed out, that doesn't necessarily mean that those are legal lots to be transferred. The property has been enjoyed for generations by the neighborhood and the public at large for recreation as open space, hiking, walking, bike riding, and camping also. And it is not my wish to change any of this, or my intention, with the possible exception maybe of the camping. Quite the contrary. With your help, I hope, we can come to a design that will ensure that this can be monumented and will be available to future generations to enjoy. To accomplish this, we, the owners, must deal with those worldly constraints that everybody deals with, the largest of which being how to pay for it. The property has value and is taxed based upon that. Further, there is maintenance of non-native species, invasive species, erosion control, illegal dumping, illegal and unhealthy camping, fuel -- fire fuel loads, dangerous conditions, liability for injury, and the list is quite a bit longer. And also, in addition, I and a number of my group would like to end up with being able to build our homes here, if that turns out to be possible. The remaining members of my group are bankers, who are understandably concerned about a return on the substantial monies already advanced by them and the substantial monies that will be needed moving forward. You know, and even if a project is not approved, a property like this is no small -- is no small item to be -- to be owned and developed. The cost associated with simply applying for any plan are substantial, as Jim pointed out. And environmental impact reports, even if focused, can exceed a quarter million dollars easily. Simple map surveying, things like that, can top $100,000, depending on how many lots you end up applying for. Design review packages for any homes proposed will come in at something like another $100,000. And I mention that because it's my intention that if we do come forward with a proposal, that we will come forward with a complete package, design review on every home, building envelopes, so that there's no question as to what's going to be there. It enables the experts who are studying the project to see, to do studies such as reflective windows and nighttime lighting and things like that, so you know what's going to be there. It's not going to be a bait-and-switch situation, but that costs a lot of money. You have to, you know, you have to produce those plans, and you have to have elevations, and you have to have things that they can study. There's a -- there's a whole list here of things. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees for processing, sewer schools review, peer review, the ongoing costs such as insurance, interest, taxes, all the maintenance issues I mentioned previously. And then, if any project is eventually approved, engineering design, installation of infrastructure, roads, power, water, the cost of which can easily top a million dollars and probably will. In deciding the wisdom of moving forward with any proposal, rather than making application, for example, for a lot line adjustment to bring some of the conditional certificate of tender compliance, or distributing the property amongst the partners and letting them make their own applications, in considering this, you know, just like anybody, we consider the likely resultant values and the cost to get there. You know, you're trying -- the bankers in our group are going to want to see that they're not going to have more money invested than they're likely to recover. And those of us who are wanting to build our homes have -- at least I have a limited budget. I'm not going to be able to go to, you know, to the ends of the earth. The difference between doing a coordinated global approach, where we come in with an application on the entire property, and doing a piecemeal, I think, is substantial. And I would -- I think everybody will agree that if anything is going to be proposed, a global approach would be the superior approach. It opens up a lot of doors, not the least of which being the ability to grant open space parcels and/or easements to the public, which is going to be pretty difficult if it's going -- coming in with piecemeal applications from different people with different proposals at different times, with different interests. The question is, and that's why I did some of these studies for my group and now to show to you, is, is it possible to craft something that's workable and acceptable to the public? And if so, is it possible to pay for it? It's not -- it's a fine line we walk, and there are a lot of variables that we don't know the answer to and that are -- that change daily depending upon what the proposal looks like, if there is going to be a proposal. You know, I can go to the maps here just to, excuse me, to bring you up to speed. This is a map that Jim has up now that shows the -- in the color, it's kind of hard to see, actually, but I thought it would be more visible. But it shows the parcels that are -- that have separate APN numbers now. It's superimposed over the CCOC map, so it's kind of confusing. But there are four of them. There's a large one over on the right that fronts up against Ridgeway Avenue, and that one's outlined in red, I believe. There's one, a large one, that is adjacent to that, that encompasses the majority of the property. I think it's 68 acres, that one. And then, there's another one that's in blue there to the right. And then, of course, there's the small one that Jim mentioned earlier that is in a separate zoning. That zoning, while that zoning is a minimum 7,500 square foot lot size, and that lot is 16,000 square feet.
Did you point that out again?
I don't --
I got it.
Yeah. While technically the lot is large enough to split, I don't believe that it would comply, given the slope computation. So, that lot is probably a stable lot. The rest of the property in the 10-acre minimum parcel area, and there are a lot of other considerations, but just by a strict reading of the minimum 10 acre per parcel would qualify for nine parcels since you've got 98 acres left, somewhat plus or minus. And so, you've got a potential of 10 lots here, just by a strict reading of the ordinance. And that's not what we're necessarily suggesting, but that's just by way of -- for a way of information. The next parcel map, I think, if you could bring that up, Jim. This one will show --
Hang on, I'm sorry.
It would be the overlay, it's called overlay CCOC, something like that.
Bruce, can I ask you to help? Sorry.
You have a -- yeah.
I'm trying to get out of this file.
I apologize, and I'm not more tech savvy. I probably could have had that in better order. Not my generation. The blue is -- the outlined blue is just one of the parcels that has an APN number. And that doesn't necessarily mean that that's a --
Does it mean something specific that's supposed to be red?
No, actually, there's three different, four different colors, but the three of them are too close together to see the difference. I thought it'd be more obvious, but apparently it's not.
Yeah.
There we go. Is that the one? That looks like -- is that -- yeah, that would be the CCOC map. This is -- and this, again, I, you know, I apologize. I thought that the -- by putting -- I should have probably shaded the entire parcels, but I thought that by bordering them, it would be more obvious. This shows the parcels that we got conditional certificates of compliance upon. And basically, what that means is that those parcels had been owned and deeded separately sometime previous, but were not necessarily created legally at the time that they were deeded separately. And that happens a lot historically in California. And the map act allows for how to deal with those, and it has a process that's part of the map act. And the first part of that process is to identify them with a conditional certificate of compliance. Whether or not they can be brought into compliance is open to debate, and that's not what I'm here to discuss today, because I really think that a global approach to start fresh and come in with a new map would be a better approach. It's just more consistent and easier to digest. The next map that I did is -- and again, these are just studies. These are not proposals that we're putting, bringing in. They're not -- they're not -- none of them are preferred configuration. They were simply done by me, for my group, and now you, to illustrate the various parameters that we have to work within. parameters that we have to work within. This one shows, I think we skipped a map. There should be one that shows ten-acre parcels. Okay, well, we can go to this one, and we'll go back to ten-acre parcel.
You want me to go back?
If you can, but not necessary. I mean, I think, well, it's better if so people have an idea. I think there's one more, there should be one more.
So there's the ten.
No, it would be the aerial, oh, let me see, ten parcel, no, wait a minute, ten by ten lot, acre lot, that's the one right there.
Excuse me, could you reorient us with these maps and point out where Santa Rita is and where the menor school is and where the market is, just so we get a better sense.
Okay, I'm not sure I know where the market school is.
I'm not sure how to get rid of these boxes.
But I know where Santa Rita is, right?
So, the Fairfax market is right there. Okay, that's St. Rita's.
I don't know why we have those.
I don't know what's going on.
I can't, I can't get rid of those things. If you can get rid of them, maybe up on the right there, you can, oh. Well, they're not in a way. We're going to move on to the next maps quickly anyway. Let me just quickly describe this one. Again, the road at the bottom there, that's now covered by those windows that are up there for some reason, the road at the bottom that kind of meanders along the border, that would be St. Francis Drake. And then, you can see Miranda going up. There we go, that's better. That'd be Miranda. And then, you've got Santa Rita's down below there. Yeah. And then, San Onofre is at the top, and it goes up to the ridge at the top, and then San Onofre. I guess that's, is that Oak Springs up there, is the street up there? Those are, they're just to identify the lots and their square footage. This study is of a strict reading of the one lot per ten acres minimum to see what a ten acre per lot split would look like. Because not only, when you, you know, it's not just that it's ten acre minimum. Per SEQA and a few other of the regulations that you deal with in the MAP Act, there need to be buildable sites on each of those lots. You're not going to create a lot that has no buildable site. And one of the, some of the considerations are, how do you get to that buildable site? You don't want to be cutting the hill up into zigzags and creating sites that are so difficult to get to that the impact is excessive. This property has an existing old road, actually, it has a number of them, but the one that most people are most familiar with is the one that comes up, goes all the way up to the ridge from Miranda. I don't know who graded it in, but it's apparently been there for forty years or something. And as Jim pointed out, they also graded in a number of pads, which have sat fallow and denuded for, I guess, twenty-five of the forty years. I don't know exactly when they were created. One of which is the highest one, which has been known by, come to be known by the neighborhood as the Spirit Circle Site, which is used quite often by people for meditation and other recreation activities. And then, there's a few that cascade down. Now, I've done cluster subdivisions all over California, and one of the goals is to preserve as much of the property without intrusion as possible, as greenbelt. We usually try to get eighty to ninety percent of the property is greenbelted. And you want to utilize, the whole idea of a cluster is to utilize the existing pads that are already there, if any, to utilize existing roads that are already there, if any, because that limits the further impact on the environment and keeps you from being more intrusive. It also works to the developer's benefit because it's cheaper. You know, it's easier for you to put in one road with utilities to a few lots in one area than to put in a lot of different driveways and a lot of different roads and try to cut those all in, you know, against hillsides and try to reach all these separate lots. So typically, when I try to design a subdivision such, you know, as, I should say that a strict reading, ten acre minimum lots is not my preferred avenue. It cuts the property up quite a bit. But in any case, and it also precludes, to a large extent, except for one path, a public access easement. First of all, any project that we come in and propose will incorporate a studied building envelope for each lot. And all property out, all of the property outside of that building envelope, whether it's privately owned or publicly owned, will have either a conservation easement or deed restriction placed upon it to keep, to preclude any further development of those properties. And in that way, we can ensure that you have a greenbelt. We coined a phrase down on the Big Shore Coast. I did a project down there, and we called it View Shed. And it's nice to have that, you know, it's, that's the quality of life. And it's not hard to do, really. I mean, those people don't need to build out there. A project like this, however, when you start cutting up, cutting parcels up like this, it's also a requirement in my mind to see to it that people don't fence things and you don't have a bunch of zigzag fences all over. The problem with the public access easement, if I was going to make a proposal such as this, I would probably choose the highest lot that includes the Spirit Circle and have it include the entire road all the way down, and have that be a donated public open space parcel, because that's the only way that you could have a public access up there. In California, the insurance companies have been running scared for years. All state won't even write a new homeowners policy. And if you have a public access across your lot, they will not insure it. And if you don't have insurance, you don't get a mortgage, you don't build your house or buy a house. There are ways around that, and one of them is to grant an open space easement and have the peoples, the people who live there, the lots, have an easement across that. And again, this, that's not, it's not my preferred method, my preferred design. The next one would be closer to something that I would think makes sense, if we can go to the cluster. Yeah. Now, there we look for, there's probably a ten parcel cluster at the top. Well, we can, we can go to this one, or we can go to the ten parcel, either way. I think the ten parcel is the better one to start with. Is that it? I think, no, that's the twelve. Let's go to the ten, and so I can. There, no, that's the same one.
This is the right one?
No, that's, there's one that says, the one that says ten parcel cluster, and there's one that says twelve. This is the twelve. There, your ten parcel cluster. Now, this map shows what I would consider, and I think the planning department would consider a more, in keeping with what is known as a cluster subdivision. And what it does is it creates lots along a single road as much as possible. Will that make bigger, yeah? You can make it quite a bit larger there.
Ah, got it.
It creates lots along the existing road, which eliminates making a bunch of driveways and more cuts into the hillside. It utilizes existing pads, which are already denuded, which also, by the way, makes any environmental investigation a little bit easier because, you know, they look at before and after. And if you're not putting in more roads and you're not cutting down more trees, that before and after is a lot less onerous than if you're cutting up the whole hillside. And as I said before, it makes it a bit cheaper. In this particular configuration, what I contemplated as a study was a ten lot cluster subdivision with only nine of those lots being buildable. The tenth lot would constitute the open space, and it would be owned in common by all of the parcels. And the reason that that makes it easier or better is because while the insurance companies will not insure your parcel if the public has access over it, they will insure as an umbrella over your parcel, over your homeowners' insurance, an open space parcel. So we can, in this configuration, we can grant easements, access and use easements to the public. And so I think that this gives us a little more flexibility. In fact, we could have multiple. Some of the neighbors and I have done, met quite a few times walking the property, and there are a few paths for, I'm a bike rider myself, so.
Marshall, can you, this top button is the thing, it's not working real great, but can you show us where the nine lots are?
Okay, I'll do that. Where am I at here? There we go. Well, we start down, I think there's one over here, isn't there? Yeah, there's one there. And this lot access is directly adjacent to Ridgeway. It's not, it's dirt up to there, there would have to be some improvements, but that's accounted.
That's like the knoll on top of Holly Hill.
Right. That's a, that's the, that is a, that's a town road, albeit paper and dirt. And then you go over here, you've got, coming up from Miranda, you've got one, number two there, three there, four there, five there, placed another seven down here because it was getting a little crowded up here, and there is already an existing road here. And then, six and eight and nine up here. The tenth parcel being this, the large parcel, it's over eighty acres, and that would be the unbuildable open space parcel, which would be greenbelted and which would presumably, we'd like to have some trails for public access to the ridge and also include public use of the Spirit Circle Site. And nobody's mentioned this, but I noticed it. There's a site up here up near Oak Springs, which is, lends itself to being, it's a perfect park site for the Oak Springs area. And it seems to me that that should be also included in any open space grant, or any public grant. The, now, this, there are conflicts and there are complications with any of these applications, not the least of which being writing the various easements and uses and all those things, but that's nuts and bolts. Those things have been done and can be done. This particular configuration allows the parcels to retain a certain amount of value that is lost by having them be one and a half or one acre, rather than ten acres, by having them have an undivided interest in the larger parcel. And this is a concept that I used in the project I have on the wall there, and it worked quite well. We did retain the value. And the reason it's important to retain some value in those lots is because in order for us to be able to retire the debt that the property cost us, deal with all of the costs that I went over earlier, infrastructure and all of those things, those lots have to have, have to accomplish, achieve a certain value, which is difficult to quantify, but we certainly know that a ten acre lot is going to command a higher value than a one acre lot, unless, of course, you can give them an undivided interest in an eighty acre parcel. There are members of my group who are doubtful that nine lots is enough, and want a tenth. But in my computations, in my experience, I think that we can do this with nine lots, and I wanted to keep the density down as low as possible. Now, I did do a study for, and I'll tell you, I'll show you the difference. We can go ahead and put up the last map, I guess. I did do a study for my group, and I'll show it to you. And this one, this map shows a twelve parcel cluster, and I'll explain to you why that is. We can go ahead and find that plus sign and put it back up bigger so people can see it. There we go. Fifty might be workable. Now, this configuration eliminates some of the problems of the previous one because it, the open space parcel, the eighty-plus acre open space parcel, is contemplated in this proposal or this study to be dedicated and given to the open space district and be publicly owned, public access, the entire parcel, without trails, without special easements for the spirit site, the entire parcel. The reason that there are twelve parcels instead of nine buildable is because the, we still have to put in infrastructure, we still have to retire the debt, we still have to put in the roads to these houses and have water tanks or whatever we need to have fuel, water flow for sprinklers and things like that. And the lots will be, and the houses will be, less valuable because they're now one and a half, one acre, and don't own part of the open space around them, and are not ten acres. So, in my study, and there's quite a lot of assumptions. You know, you try to project what the value is going to be, and you try to, you know, based on demand today, and you try to project how long it's going to take to get there, and you're kind of shooting in the dark. But I have some experience, and I came up with that you would need twelve parcels to offset the costs and give the bankers and the group their return and let us have our houses and retire that debt. And in this way, the public would gain an eighty acre parcel that would be basically a park. We would, as the owners in that grant, put some restrictions on it. We would want to see, we would want to know that the road that we put in was not used for motor vehicles for, other than the people who live there and their guests. We would want to make sure that, I have dogs also, that it's a no-leash zone for dogs and that mountain bikes could not be restricted away from the property. But other than that, we would grant the property. And I do, right now, have a majority in my group and have authority to move ahead with something like that. But it, you know, it's twelve lots. It's more lots than the zoning would allow, and it's a decision that has to be made by the community. I don't feel comfortable making that decision myself. Now, it isn't significantly different than the previous map in that on this side, you have only one additional lot, I believe. There's one additional lot down here. The other two lots are placed up on the ridge here on Ridgway. And I did that, these aren't as nice of sites, but it seemed to me that it would be a lot less intrusive and a lot more palatable because they don't need to come up the same axis they have Ridgway. And also, they're quite a bit, quite a ways away and not as visible. So I tried to move that density over to the ridge on the side. And keep in mind, this is just one man's studies. There are probably an infinite number of combinations of maps that could be created. These are the ones that I came up with after many months going back and forth with my group and walking the property with the neighbors and trying to use what I perceive to be the most logical sites for homes, those being the pads that were already denuded and cut anyway, and people have been looking down on as, without vegetation, and also the sites that would allow the greatest value once developed so that these parcels could offset the cost of the entire project. One other consideration that was given to the sighting of these building envelopes, and keep in mind that these lots here, that entire lot is not a building envelope. The building envelope would be very tight down where the house would be, and the rest of that parcel would also be greenbelted. So even though it's not in the public domain, they could not develop it. And the other consideration that was made here was whether or not the houses, is this a site where we could put the house back into the hill and mitigate its visibility with landscaping and things like that, such that it would not have a large impact on the community, even the people way across, with houses on mountain. And believe me, one of the studies that should be done and will be done is a reflective window study. I've seen, I've seen places where they approve subdivisions, and within a couple of years after they're built, people three miles away have had the temperature of their homes raised in the evenings and afternoons because the sun reflects across the canyon. So those are all things that we were thinking about when we were looking for places where we could put pads and sight the houses. And again, the Greenpoint guidelines and rating system touches on a lot of these things as well. And also, I've been building green since before the phrase was coined, all over California, and have some proprietary designs of my own. In fact, I think I can, one of my selfish motives is that I would like to build the houses up here. I think I can make these homes as close to net zero as possible. You can, you can, you're always going to need some pot of water for cooking and for, for, for cooking and for drinking. But I think I can reduce the water usage on these homes by eighty percent, eliminate trash haul off, and make them net energy producers rather than users. And I'd like to try to do that and showcase some of my designs. What we've discussed up to this date and agreed upon as a group was that if we do come in with a proposal, any proposal will be, or any homes that are proposed, will be twenty-five hundred square foot maximum with an eight hundred square foot standalone in-law rental unit per the preference in the general plan to create more rentals. Whether or not, you can't regulate people to rent them, but at least they'll be there and available. So, and the reason for that is twofold. It's cost of construction, but also, it's a lot easier to hide a home that's twenty-five hundred square feet and mitigate some of the visual impacts. And it's difficult to make a home net zero that's seven thousand square feet. So, I mean, in order to accomplish what I'd like to do, and some of my group would like to do with our homes and the other homes up there, we felt necessary to limit the size of the homes. I think that's about touching. I'm sure there's a lot of questions, and I'll be happy to answer them. But I'll turn the floor back over to you. to answer them, but I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you. Actually, actually.
Can you show the first one of the highs and highs of the ready movement?
I'm sorry.
10 acres.
Ah, okay, yeah.
Do you want your pointer back?
Thank you. The 10-acre lots or the 10 parcel?
10 acres.
10 acres.
The 10 parcel cluster.
10 by 10.
10 by 10.
It simply adds, cuts the property up so that each parcel has approximately 10 acres. I mean, we'd have to monkey with a little bit, but if you look at the sizes that are in the boxes, you see 422,000 square feet, 450,000, a lot, 10-acre parcel is roughly 430,000 square feet. So the idea here was to give each parcel 10 acres and at the same time see to it that it was utilizing an existing pad rather than having to cut a new one. Also, to try to put them as much as possible on the same road so that we don't have to cut new driveways and things in there. And also, it limits or cuts back on the cost to us, the developer, of the infrastructure.
Madam Chair, I think what we need to do is transition into the public comments section, and then Mr. Rothman can answer any questions as the comments come along. And given the volume or the number of people here tonight, I would recommend that we limit people's time so that everyone has a chance to speak. Maybe we could just have a show of hands of how many people would like to speak. That's it? So perhaps we could start with two minutes? I'm sorry.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You want to ask questions before we open it up? Okay, okay, we'll do a couple of questions before we open it up to the audience. Sorry, Frank, hang on just a minute. They're going to ask Mr. Rothman a couple of questions before we open it up.
Yeah, I mean, does anyone from the planning commission want to ask that? Mr. Rothman, any questions?
Okay, so. Marshall, come on up. Thank you.
Sorry, got to push the button again. I broke my ankle, so it's kind of hard for me to stand, so I sit down as any chance I can get.
Thanks, Mr. Rothman. You mentioned that you would like to do net zero homes that are producing energy and not just using energy. Can you give us just some brief ideas of the type of features that you're talking about?
I'd be happy to. I've incorporated some of these designs in other homes, and I have a proprietary design that I can provide diagrams of if somebody wants to email me, that very conveniently for now, because we're in a drought, utilizes recycling the water system by collecting rainwater and gray water and filtering the gray water through diatomaceous earth filters and collecting them in a tank below the house, gravity fed, which creates a problem. You want to flush your toilets, you want those toilets full, you want to irrigate, you need to have that water pumped. You put, when you have a piece of property like this that has so much square footage that you can hide enough solar panels and you have enough sun, you can put, you can have it hooked up such that, and I have the designs, as I said, already done, where the water that collects in the lower tank, during the day, when the, because solar panels, they create electricity when there's light on them, whether you're using it or not. If you're not using it, you can either put it back into PG&E's grid and they return it at some lower, lesser amount, and there's loss in generation and a lot of other problems, or it's shunted off as heat. And you're not going to be using that solar energy that's created by all those solar panels all the time. In fact, probably not most of the time. So the design that I have has a small electric 24-volt pump with a controller so that, assuming that the water levels or float valves are correct in an upper tank and the lower tank, the water that is collected in the lower tank is pumped when you're not needing the extra energy. That extra energy, rather than going to PG&E, is used to pump that water up to the upper tank. So that now you have gravity feed for your toilets and your landscaping. And understand that the single most energy demanding resource that you have in your home is water. It's not electricity, it's not lights. It takes a lot of energy to create that water and get it to your house and purify it, pump it and all that. And this system not only allows you to utilize rain runoff for irrigation without any cost, except for the initial cost for the system and for the solar panels, but it also allows some other nice benefits, one of which being a battery. The best way to produce energy and utilize it efficiently is to produce it and use it as close as possible, you produce it as close as possible where you're using it. There's loss in transmission, there's loss in storage. PG&E doesn't store, you know, they send it to some other group when they have too much. If you're going to store it, and I understand that Tesla just came out with their new home battery, that, you know, batteries, even good ones, even the lithium batteries, are extremely polluting to produce and to discard and expensive. And I don't believe they're necessary. There's a trick that the power companies have been using for, back to the Roman days. When that water, when that extra energy is not needed and being produced by those solar panels, it pumps the water up to the upper tank. You size the upper tank such that it's more water than you're going to need for your use, and even if it isn't, you have a separate line that goes down from that tank to the lower tank that has a smaller AC generator inline, and the controller reads when you have demand at night, you want to run your TV and there's no solar energy, it opens that valve, runs that water through that AC generator, and you have that power. And the next morning, when the sun comes back up, pumps the water back up. Doesn't cost you a thing and it doesn't go into the PG&E grid. Now, okay, I'm sorry.
That's excellent, thank you.
Was that enough?
Glad to hear that.
There shouldn't be more, there should be more.
There's one other thing I want to point out, and I don't know that this is possible, it occurred to me on the way over here. It seems to me that if you have excess power coming off those homes, that rather than giving it to PG&E and not ever getting it back, you should be able to assign it to the town to be distributed.
Anyone else from the planning commission want to ask questions?
Yeah, hi, I have a question or two. Hi, Mr. Rothman, thank you very much for your presentation. I assume you're familiar with the town's ridgeline ordinance and the map of the ridge lines and where they fall on the map that you were showing us earlier?
I'm not familiar with, I've seen a couple of different maps, and I'm not sure which one is accurate because I have, the maps that I've seen include the entire property, just about. And so I'm not sure which ridgeline ordinance you're talking about.
Well, I guess I'd ask town staff at some point to provide the formal ridgeline map to Mr. Rothman so he can be clear about exactly where those outlines are.
We've not seen these maps before, just to be clear. We haven't had a sit-down with Mr. Rothman, and we explained that the map in the general plan and also the map we use as staff that was in the prior general plan, that this ridgeline, we consider part of that ridgeline area. But we will provide those, yes.
And then the other map that I just want to make sure you're familiar with and check it out in the general plan if you haven't seen it already, is the visual resources map.
That one I have looked at, and I'm comfortable that with proper placement and screening that the, any project that, if any project was approved, that we could mitigate any visual impact at all. In fact, we could make it look better than it does now because a lot of the visual impact now is from denuded roadways and pads and has been. Any more, any other questions?
I have a question. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I think this is a great first step involving the community. I was wondering, in the past, how have you involved the community in the process? It sounds like it's a long process.
It is a long process, yes.
And so have you engaged or involved the community in the past on other developments?
Every one of them. In fact, the one that I put up here on the wall, you'll see, we greenbelted 436 acres and created bike paths and all sorts of things in that one, put in a helipad for the CDF for the surrounding area with a water tank. And, you know, that's part and parcel, if you'll excuse the pun, to my modus operandi. I've always felt that these kinds of projects could be a win-win, and I've taken that approach from the start. And in the last 35 years, I think I've greenbelted thousands of acres.
Will you be showing us examples of some of your other cluster developments?
Sure, as I said, I have one right here.
Oh, they're up there.
Well, only one. I just got done moving, and some of the boxes, I couldn't find the right boxes. I kind of made a mess looking for them, but I did find this one, so I brought the one from San Luis Obispo. And there's, you know, half a dozen others that I would point to as good examples. This particular cluster, I got unanimous approval from a board that was decidedly no growth, and it's mentioned there. In fact, they gave me a good mention when they approved it.
Okay, yeah, Mimi touched on one of my questions about the ridgeline, so thank you for your response to that. One thing I wasn't clear about, maybe you mentioned it, but I just wanted to clarify, on the cluster schemes, what was the approximate lot area of those?
Well, you know, it can be changed, it can be varied, depending on which one you're talking about. The one that has the parcels, all of the clusters that I proposed there, I kind of, you know, I used the same map and just adjusted it. They're about one acre to one and a half acres, less than two acres. But they could be made smaller or bigger, depending upon what the design and what the needs were.
Okay, so if I understand what the, you know, the entitlement, Jim, would a solution like this would require like a rezoning of the property because it would be less than what the lot site would?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I think, I think that's, yes.
Just a comment more than a question for the developer. When we look at the ridgeline maps, I would like to make sure that staff has some type of review, this is probably in the environmental and the geological studies that you need to do of the natural flows of water on those ridge lines to make sure that those are not severely impacted or impacted in any way.
Yeah, hydrological studies would be part of any reports that we'd have to do.
Thank you, I'll appreciate seeing that.
And they do, it's pretty comprehensive, they do an entire basin study.
So now, it looks like we're at 8:07. We probably are going to go over past 8:30. And again, if we don't have any more than the show of hands we had, we could probably handle the two-minute time limit. We should probably do a reality check at 8:30 so that there's time for a robust discussion after public comments. So maybe we should just get people to weigh in. I believe Garrett's going to take notes over in the flip chart, and maybe we could just get people's comments and then come back after a certain number have come through to perhaps address some of the comments that have been made, if that's okay.
Okay, so we'll open the public discussion at this point.
Very good, thank you. Frank Edgar, 13 men away, Fairfax. The approval of the last six conditional certificates of compliance is one of the most abusive violations of local and state statutes I have ever seen in my 40 years as a mayor and council member here in Fairfax. In the 80s, in the 80s, we fought these battles out. The position of the Fairfax Town Council knows subdividing of parcels of land in Fairfax using certificates of compliance or conditional certificates of compliance. The town is not required to approve conditional certificates of compliance. In fact, I've got the application for all of the parcels right here. Four of them are a little postage stamp, less than 1,000 square feet. The application here on page three, it says for staff use. The zone, minimum lot size, size of this lot, approval, conditionally approved, denied, right on the application. The date, conditions, applicant inform, mail to. They're all blank. The town never filled out the town portion where it says for staff use, as far as the lot sizes and all of the conditions. They're all blank. The maps are really clear. Little postage stamped lots, less than 1,000 square feet. One's about 300 square feet, one of the lots approved. So after that discussion back in the 80s, the then Fairfax Planning Director left town, and I wrote a right to appeal ordinance of the staff decisions to the town council, any decision by a staff member, right to appeal. The Fairfax Town Attorney reviewed that ordinance that granted a right to appeal and agreed with it. He gave it 100% approval at the time. The appeal, that appeal law is still in effect. It empowered the town council with the authority to overturn a staff decision if the action was appealed to the town council within 10 days of the staff decision. The Miranda neighborhood asked to be notified immediately upon approval. Mr. Moore advised the Miranda neighborhood 19 days after the approval, nine days after the appeal time ended. Dr. Wall attended the Fairfax Town Council, but he won't rezone the 98 acre parcels, a minimum of 10-acre lots in the 80s. I specifically, I specifically asked him if he had any objection. He said.
You asked one of the neighbors to speak instead of you, right?
He said no objection.
You didn't want any type of.
Well, thank you very much. Reject this proposal, require the developer to meet the Fairfax Town Council, Town Co. Thank you.
I'm Jan Haglund, I live at 84 San Gabriel Drive. My concern's a little more simple, and it has to do with saturation. Our schools are busting at the seams, and all those cars, usually a minimum of two to a home, all those cars that are going up all those roads, when they come back down those roads, please do not tell me they are being dumped on Sir Francis Street.
My comment is more a question, and it has to do with fire safety. And I know that there are quite a few homeless people living in the canyon now. I came across one as recently, a few weeks ago, who had gas burners and a grill by his tent site. He said he'd lived there for three years. So I'm concerned as to what will be done for this long process. In the meantime, until anything is developed, or whether it is or isn't, and what you can do to make sure that you work closely with the police and the fire departments, et cetera, on a very, very regular basis.
Hello, my name is Philip Benson, and I own the home and live in the home at 121 San Gabriel Drive, which is at the end of San Gabriel Drive. And approximately 10 to 15 years ago, there was a landslide, a mudslide, that came down the hill from the wall property that completely covered my property and my neighbor's property. This happened as, and there was a big blue tarp that everybody probably remembers on the wall property. And this actually happened, from what I understand, as a result of the houses that were built on the ridgeline, all of that soil was dumped over onto the wall property, and it really wasn't part of the mountainside. It was just loose soil, and then, of course, it grew and grass grew, and there were some trees there, but not much. So that land on that part of that wall property, up above Miranda Drive, excuse me, up above San Gabriel Drive, is not stable and very susceptible to saturation and mudslides. And this year, if we have an El Nino, it's anybody's guess what will happen. Even last year, there were blue tarps, and we didn't have a lot of rain. Thank you.
Is it possible for you to talk to the gentleman? The gentleman that just spoke, can you show us where that landslide was? I've got a pointer here.
I've got a pointer here.
If I can orient myself properly, I believe this is where my property is right now, okay? This is the end of San Gabriel Drive. The landslide took place up right in here. In other words, this is San Anselmo Ridgeline and around here is where the blue tarps and the landslide. If anybody wants to correct me, please feel free to do so, but it's in this area in here where the landslides were. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is George Scott. I live at 57 San Gabriel Drive. See how this thing works?
It's a top button.
Okay, right about there. And a few years ago, Mr. Rothman spoke, and thank you for addressing this, Mr. Rothman. You spoke about some lots up here, and this lot here collapsed and ended up in the living room of my neighbor. So I don't know if anyone else in San Gabriel remembers that, but I've got to say, I'm really impressed that so many people showed up. 49ers playing, you know, the Seahawks, you know? I think it reflects not so much interest, but concern that this many people showed up. And the only thing I want to address right now and finish with this is this notion of the road here. It sounds like the intuitive, as you termed it, road is here. Now, I know everyone in this neighborhood has bought their house for a couple of reasons. It's in Fairfax, greatest town in the world, right? Absolutely. And this is probably the best neighborhood in Fairfax. Modestly, right? So, you know, this neighborhood here, you know, it's a very kid-friendly one, there's no through traffic. People bought their homes there, they work hard for their homes to have a cul-de-sac-type neighborhood, which is the same for San Gabriel Drive. So any traffic coming through here is really going to have a very negative effect on people who've lived here for many years and have relied on this quiet neighborhood environment. And then finally, when we have all this traffic, and I think, you know, we're talking about two, three cars within law units for these various properties, all funneling down this one road down here, and there's no traffic light. So even without, you know, currently with a lighter traffic, it's difficult, you can make a left onto there if it's clear to do so, a lot of people are too afraid to do it. I think we'd have to have a light in there, who would pay for it? And how are the people compensated who have lost the serenity of their little neighborhood? So--
Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, please. And just for the record, you're welcome to state your name and address, but it's not imperative.
Sure.
It's a top button.
Okay. Yeah, he was right about this traffic area in here, and apologies to Mr. Rothman, because I know that it seems like more advantageous financially, but if there was any other way, I think it would be, we've got enough signs to warn about traffic and kids there already, and any addition to traffic in the neighborhood is not great. Where I'm concerned, and where my family's concerned, as they're involved now too, is that the first thing here is too near to what happened there at 60-some. And now, they're saying that the slide was over here, I'm remembering it as above here in this area, and that some houses, I don't know if it was 90 or 100, had to be evacuated. I'm aware of that problem, I'm aware of the problem there at 60. I've been in touch with this since 1983. What happens, though, is even with the traffic we've got now, somebody makes a wrong turn and here, we have one party here at the top of the hill and more near the bottom of the hill. As soon as they make a turn and realize that they're on the wrong street, then they try to back up into the driveway. And since '83, I think I've had three garage doors have to have problems because of that. If we had a couple of really beautiful pillar posts and a sliding electronic gate, I think that would eliminate that problem, but other than that, I don't know how that would be eliminated. But this is just about the traffic that's here now. And again, this hill is probably the most formidable hill in the whole range here, inso much as its slope combined with its height is unique. And I've seen some little slippage there, but not enough to be concerned. I did have a soils engineer involved at one time, and he said those six-by-12 corner posts would not be substantial to help you.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know it was overfilled. So anyway, yeah, we don't want the hill to come down.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Velvi Appleton and I live at 125 Ridgeway. I want to talk about the pads that Mr. Rothman was mentioning.
It's a top button. The other way, the other way. You face it the other way.
Okay.
And top.
There we go, okay. Where's the thing?
You have to jiggle the button a little bit, it's a top button. Just push the top button.
Do you want to?
This one, this right here. Just, it's a little bit faulty, sorry.
Well, anyway.
Let me see if I can do it for you. Where are you?
Yeah, okay. So what I want to say is that Mr. Rothman's mentioning that there was one of his plans had three parcels up there, saying that he's adjacent to Ridgeway. That is not adjacent to Ridgeway, there's no road up there. It's a footpath. And we've had a lot of hubbub about developing 130 Ridgeway, and when they wanted to build a road up there, it had to be a 22-foot wide road to accommodate fire trucks and turnaround, and that would require coming into someone's property 18 feet and building a 12-foot-long, 600-foot, 12-foot-high, 600-foot-long retaining wall to accommodate that road to access these. There is no road there, so I don't want people to think that, oh, it's adjacent to Ridgeway. It's not, it's not really a road there. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I just hope that the Planning Commission will take into consideration that really, we don't want houses up there, as much as you've made a great presentation. And I believe that you develop consciously and green, and that's fantastic. And if development's going to happen, that's great. But I really don't want houses there, and to rezone this thing for 10 or 12 parcels, I don't really care if their debt gets retired or not. They bought this property to make a profit. This is not a public service, so--
Okay. Thank you.
I just would like to sort of, you know, take into account that our priorities in Fairfax are to maintain the quality of our town and our environmentalism and the reason we all live here. And, you know, to have an outside developer come in and buy the property and then tell us that he has to retire his debt, well, you know, that's not the way our town works. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Barron, and I'm basically speaking for a lot of people from Oak Manor who couldn't be here tonight. There are a number of different concerns issued, expressed by my neighbors, including the one about traffic. If you live here, you know that it's like a choo-choo train and it's not moving in the morning as it is, it's crazy. And of course, having two units would significantly impact, plus service vehicles exiting from Miranda Oaks would be a huge impact and would really have to have a light there which would back up the traffic even further up White Hill. Also, there is concern about Mr. Rothman's past. I had to bring it up because of his expression about shepherding, and a lot of people feel that this is a living scape and not a hardscape, that this is a living ecosystem and we are really impacting it hugely as it is. It is on the brink, all the deer, the foxes, the coyote, we know the animals that live here, and they're struggling as it is. Putting building materials, however repurposed as they have been, into building roads, concrete and asphalt, will toxify water runoff in this area, not only initially, but for several years to come. And there is concern about his past, and I didn't catch the name of his company, he keeps referring to his partners, I guess I'll get that later. But anyway, as a whole, this is a living landscape, not a hardscape, and we must act to protect it because despite the fact we have drawn lines to cut it up, it is still one big living ecosystem, one whole living habitat for us all. What one does with a part is still a part of the whole, so we are all affected and connected.
Hi, Mallory Guide, I'm on Willow Avenue. Two points I want to make is, one, is that my neighbor put a swimming pool above my house. After that, I had a mudslide, a landslide. I think any kind of building, and I'm on bedrock, but any kind of building is going to compromise the land. I'm also on the Affordable Housing Committee, so if you're talking about doing conscious building, then build small houses that are affordable in a smaller cluster, because you're starting with 2,500 square feet. I don't believe that's going to end up being 2,500 square feet. And I also don't think anybody who's going to afford a parcel of land like this is going to put an in-law unit and rent it. I am-- I've been in Fairfax since '71, too, and I was late because it took me 14 minutes to find a parking space here. I don't think we need to bring any more people in on a piece of land that's absolutely pristine and magnificent and further wreck the town. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's James Palczynski, I actually live on the other side of the ridge in San Anselmo on Oak Knoll. But I have a question for Mr. Rothman. I guess I'm doing a little math, if each one of the houses is 2,500 square feet and there's an 800 square foot in-law, that's 3,300 square feet each if they go for just a modest premium to the average in Fairfax. 12 houses, we're talking about $25 million. You know, the land was purchased for about one and three-quarters, you've talked about another $1 million in site development. Even with a modest builder's premium, you know, I know I've heard you talk about retiring their debt, you know, and making their investment back, but are we talking more about 10 to 12 million dollars in profit from the enterprise? Is that about right?
My name is Scott Huxtrasser, I live at 141 Bolinas Road. I'm an environmental planning consultant, I've been doing that for 30 years, 10 years in county government, 10 years in county government. My question, I have three questions for Mr. Rothman. A, have you considered a much tighter development that would cluster and just extend the existing neighborhood with lot sizes similar to those? And B, have you considered homes of the same size to be compatible with the neighborhood? And C, affordable housing could be smaller. I think what you see in that cluster development is probably some of the most expensive housing in the county, or in this particular town. So I would suggest that you kind of recalibrate, maybe let your creative engineer, Mr. Schwartz, give you some advice on how to cluster your development better, because I think it'll save a lot of money on infrastructure. Thank you.
Is that it? Nobody else? Okay, Madam Chair, I think you can bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
Okay, does anyone have any other items or comments they'd like to make?
You can share, I think you have to share either Bruce's mic or Laura's.
Yes, I was hoping that you could talk a little bit about the development, the proposal process with respect to traffic impact assessments and where in the process does that traffic assessment happen?
You're asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Part of the environmental initial study is traffic impacts, and the town code has certain thresholds that trigger a traffic impact study. And you could get to that, it's 100 additional trips per day that triggers that. And so I think that you'd probably be looking at a traffic impact study. And that's, in this town, it's rather unique, the way it's done, the applicant has to propose the methodology for studying the traffic and have the council approve it ahead of time, and then they have their consultant do the work. And then we have a peer-review consultant review that work. And then that gets coupled with the rest of the application package going to you all. And then, let's suppose that you approved something and approved the traffic impact study, and that action was not appealed, it still has to finally go back to the town council one last time to approve the traffic impact study. And all three of those stops, the beginning, approving the methodology at the town council, your review of the entire package at the Planning Commission, and then the final approval of the traffic impact study by the town council, are all three public hearings that are publicly noticed and are done in this room.
And does the study also include mitigation, if there's certain impacts, at some point mitigation measures have to be--
Yeah, yeah. Let me give you an example, when the Good Earth went into its new location down at the east end of town, that traffic study led to a lot of concerns from local folks. So we had a community meeting to talk about lessening the impact to the immediate Bell neighborhood. There's also contingencies in that condition of approval, I believe you were on the commission at that time, that when the level of service at primarily Center and Pastore and Center and Pacheco get to a lesser level of service, gets worse, which would then require a traffic signal, then Good Earth is on the hook to pay their fair share of what created that situation where traffic lights would be required, which are not very, you know, we don't like to see more traffic lights, but that's the kicker in that particular application. So those are the sorts of mitigations that can be recommended and approved or not.
Hearing correctly, then the applicant does have some responsibility for those mitigation measures?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And the terminology is called level of service, it's like A to F, A being the best, F failing. And when you get to the D and F range, or particularly F, then you have to mitigate to less than significant impacts.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Rothman, you mentioned briefly that you had explored some alternate trail locations in your analysis of the 10-lot clustered development. Can you explain a little bit more what you've sort of thought about in that regard? Because the current trail, as you know, has been well-used and well-loved for a long time.
Yeah, I can, I'll try to answer all of those questions if I can remember them. The trails that we, the neighbors and I, the neighborhood specifically and I looked at, of course, the road that everybody's using and has used for generations is certainly available to be used, but we thought that it might be nice to have more than one trail so that bikes and hikers don't have conflict. And there are some much more picturesque ways to get up to the top there that would, I think, be, and we, all of us thought, would be better for use with the public, just by way of having something nicer than walking along a road. The burden that's on the ecosystem there now is not, and that was correctly pointed out, is having an effect, has been there for some time, started with denuding some of the hillside. But also, there's invasive non-native species, there's camping, there's a lot of pressure on that property that can be mitigated or even prevented or eliminated. The problem that we run into, and this speaks to the smaller lot cluster subdivision process, Fairfax doesn't command the per-square-foot huge prices that a Mill Valley or some other place would command. The construction costs are the same, and the infrastructure and processing costs on a project like this, traffic studies, another cost, those things add up very quickly to millions and millions of dollars. And that's not counting the--
And that's not counting the, the carry or the interest on the money that's been tied up for that period of time. So we don't end up with, you know, any kind, anywhere near the kind of slam dunk profit that, that was mentioned. We only added, I only added, as a study, the, the idea of having in-law units, because that's what's written in the general plan. I don't think that's necessary for any proposal that we make, and if the community at large doesn't like that proposal, even though it's in the general plan, we certainly have, do not have our hearts set on anything. This is an open study, and we're, we're open to all suggestions. I think that, you know, 800 square foot in-law units is problematic in a lot of ways, for me. But the general plan wanted to create some rental income, lower income or lower-cost rental housing. And of course, you can't, you can't regulate people to tell them they have to rent some other house, and there's no way to do that. And I agree, I don't think that a majority of those people are going to end up renting them. We were just trying to comply with what was in the general plan on that. Does that answer your question? Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Shall I stay here and answer?
You might.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission members?
I have a question about soils reports. Have you done any borings, any soils reports recently?
Not recently. There are a number that are available, and I've looked at, I have enough experience, I've had some geol, I have a couple engineers that I've walked property with and who've given me some investigative studies. The geological surveys are done on the property. We can, we know pretty much what's there. And with this much property, I'm, we tried to choose the sites that were already well-known and already had been investigated. It's pretty sure that, that we can pick sites that will be stable and that can be built. And by the way, none of that is going to get approved without being studied. And if it doesn't pass, it doesn't get approved. I mean, there's, all of these things, like traffic studies and those things, this is a long ways from getting approval. It's gotta be looked at. I'm expecting a, a lot of these things get addressed in a comprehensive environmental impact report. I don't, you know, I suppose we could get a negative declaration on this property, but I don't really see that it qualifies for that. I think it's gonna need a full-on environmental impact report, and that's going to address all of those issues as they relate to each other.
Norma?
The Chair, this is not a comment. You could sit down, sir. I don't need an answer from you. It's more a comment for staff and, and the public. I know there, Jim, you mentioned an initial study, and then all these soils reports, the geologics, the biologicals, the Ridgeway analysis, all of that would need to be provided so that an initial study could be done, but, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see any way that this project is getting through with an initial study and a NEG deck.
I would, I would...
There will be a master EIR that's required for a project of this...
In all likelihood, I agree with you.
Of this size. I just want to put that out for, for folks.
We just have to go through the motions of initial study.
We need to go through the motions, exactly.
And then, I would, you know, I would concur.
I just don't want people to think, oh, a little initial study and a NEG deck. There's no way that's going to happen.
No, right. And, and by the way, often in these activities, it's the environmental impact report upon which things are challenged in court. So, is, are we there?
Does anyone, I guess so. So at this point, we'd like to thank everyone for coming, and we're gonna close the...
Workshop.
The workshop at this point.
Thank you. Thank you.